How far after six?
Will the meeting in the Marshall City Council to order with the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone here this evening. We have an agenda before us. Are there any corrections to that or any additions or deletions to that agenda? If not, we'll operate under that agenda. The first item then would be consider the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held on September 27, 2022. Russ, I believe you have a clarification.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the fire department purchase of two grass rigs, I believe I obtained the minutes from the Equipment Review Committee, and that committee, Craig Schaefer and Jim Lizinski and Amanda Short were there, and the subject was brought up about approaching Lyon County, asking for some ARPA funds to help defray some of the costs as a majority used for the skids took place in the townships. I did talk to Councilman Lizinski and Councilman Schaefer, and they both have agreed that I think we should just make this as part of the motion that the fire department approached the county just for funding. If they get funding, great. If they don't get funding, they've still got approval to buy this kid. So, yeah, so that's, Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to see that. I don't know how to word it. Stephen can come up with the words that the fire department approached the county to see if there's funds available.
So the motion stands, but that was part of the discussion?
Correct.
So that discussion will be included in the minutes?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other corrections or additions or corrections to the minutes?
I move approval as corrected.
Second motion by Craig, seconded by Amanda to approve the minutes as they have been amended. Discussion? If not, all will move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion passes. We'll move then to the first of a couple of public hearings, three public hearings that we'll have this evening. The first public hearing is about, is on the James Avenue Camden Drive reconstruction project. We will have a public hearing on the assessment, and then following the adjournment of the public hearing, we'll consider the resolution that would adopt the assessment. I'll call on City Engineer Director of Public Works, Jason Anderson, to conduct this public hearing. Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. This was a construction project that we completed in the 2021 construction season, the complete reconstruction of West James Avenue from Forest Street to Camden Drive, and then Camden Drive from James to Forest Street. We also included storm sewer work out across the golf course to the Redwood River. In the packet, you've got a cost breakdown sheet as well as the assessment roll. 7.2% of the project costs were special assessed, 7.9% paid by wastewater, 12.5% paid by MMU, 51.6% paid by the Surface Water Management Utility, and 20.9% City General Fund paid or ad verum. Total project costs were $995,218. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay. Thank you, Jason. We'll open up for any public comment as part of this public hearing, either from members of the audience or from the council. If there's no public comment as part of the public hearing, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
No move.
Second. Motion by Craig, seconded by John to close the public hearing. Discussion on that motion? Was it?
It was me that made it, but that's okay.
What did I say?
He would have done it.
Motion by Steve, seconded by John. Discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. We'll move then, or now consider the resolution that would adopt the assessment. Are there any questions about the resolution?
I move the resolution.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Russ. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. Item number three is also a public hearing. This is a public hearing for an on-sale and Sunday liquor license application for Atlantic Place. Stephen, are you going to handle this? I can, I'll call on Stephen Anderson, City Clerk, to conduct this public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I received a application for an on-sale and Sunday liquor license for Atlantic Place. With our current ordinances, we can only have a license for one address. So as of right now, with Atlantic Place going into 100 West College Drive, our current license is under Bello Cucina. So this public hearing is a transfer from Bello Cucina to Atlantic Place.
Okay. We'll open up for any public comment as part of the public hearing on this application. Craig?
Just a question, Mr. Mayor. So the actual, the previous holder of that, though, the owner was not the same as the, as the owner of the, of the new facility, correct?
Correct. It originally went under NOCHMS, but then before they actually submitted their liquor license to Department of Revenue, they switched names. So the original application was never submitted under NOCHMS.
Okay. And so now there's not going to be any fee collected on this for the remainder of the calendar year, correct? It's operating under the fees previously paid?
It would be prorated for Atlantic Place.
Okay. All right. That was kind of my question is getting at is that they're not using up an unused portion of the previous owner. It's going to be new funds and the others' part were rebated or?
Correct.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Any other input as part of the public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, just a question, Stephen, and I'm kind of jumping ahead to the next one, too. I see this one is a renewal application and the next one is a new application? Is that just a mistake on our end or is that, should they both be renewals?
Both of these would be new. It would probably, that was a wording mistake.
Okay, so it's checked as, the Atlantic Place one is checked as a renewal, correct?
Correct. When they were filling it out, they marked it as a renewal, but it's
It's a new.
It's a new application.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Other input as part of the public hearing?
I move we close the public hearing.
Second. By Craig, seconded by Jim to close the public hearing. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Close the voting? Oh, excuse me. Now we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. The, no further action then is necessary on, on this. Right, Stephen?
Just closing the hearing.
Okay. Then we'll move to Agenda Item Number Four. This is a public hearing on the on-sale liquor license application for the Gambler. Once again, Stephen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is pretty much the exact same situation. The Gambler now has a new owner, and so we are transferring the license from the previous owner, Piercy Enterprises LLC, to the new owner because it is at the same location.
Any input as part of the public hearing?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
By John, seconded by Steve. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion passes. Okay, we'll move to the consent agenda. We'll bring the items up on the screen that are on the consent agenda.
Get number five first.
Oh, number five, yes. Agenda Item Number Five, consider the awarded bids for the pickup of refuse at various locations. Once again, Stephen. Stephen Anderson, City Clerk.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. On October 6th, I received two bids for the garbage contracts for the city of Marshall. One was received from Southwest Sanitation and the other was received from Wes, or Waste Management. I did reach out to West Central Sanitation as well, but no bid was received. Southwest Sanitation was our apparent little bid at
Okay, thank you, Stephen.
The contract is over a two-year period.
Okay. Questions about the bid process or the bid, little bid received?
Mr. Mayor, I just, I think I brought this up the last time we had this project as well. I just, I would still like to find out why we're having a three-yard container dumped twice a week at the airport. It's the only place in our whole city that we have a three-yard container and it's dumped twice a week. So, and the other thing, I think the last time I brought up that we don't do any recycling out at the airport. If we're, if we're doing recycling, maybe we can eliminate one of the, one of those three-yard containers or else one of the dumps. And then last thing is on the, on the breakout of all things, you've got independent park. We should change that to independence. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. And I can get that, somebody can furnish that information on that three-yard dumpster later on. It's just, I'm just kind of curious because I asked the same question a year ago, or two years ago, whenever it was.
Okay. Stephen, do you have any follow-up information at this time? Otherwise, you can follow up on that.
I do not. I will look into it.
Thank you.
Any other questions about the bid?
The only other thing on the bid, and Sharon answered the question, if somebody in the public is looking at wastewater, it seems like it's a lot higher bid for the same-sized dumpster. If you want to explain, Scott, why that would be great. It was explained to me, but I think it'd be good to so, because it is significantly higher than the other ones and the explanations actually.
Correct.
Okay, thank you, Mayor and Council. At wastewater, we have two one-yard, cubic-yard dumpsters in our preliminary building. We've got two processes running there. One of them removes grit, items that settle in the wastewater stream, so it's very heavy. And then the other one is the screenings. So that's kind of a, that's the majority. It's, I think it's a weight issue. Those get awful heavy. The other one, the one and a half, that is just for our shop and our facility, so.
Okay.
And if you ever go out and actually see those dumpsters get filled, you'll even further understand why this is really a pretty reasonable charge.
Yeah, no, and I saw that, because I saw it, and I was like, why is wastewater paying more? And that way, so the public now knows it is a weight issue. They said garbage is charged by weight.
Yep.
Point says that it's not goodbye, it's see you later.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, you have the recommendation for the award of bid. I entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second. Motion by Craig, seconded by Russ to award the bid for the pickup of ref- refuse to Southwest Sanitation. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. Now we'll move to the consent agenda. If we bring the items on the screen that are on the consent agenda this evening. And they include consider the resolution increasing the Marshall Fire Department Relief Association benefit level, consider a resolution designated in uniform election dates and polling locations for 2023, consider the application for a gambling permit for a raffle for SMSU Gold Rush Days, consider the application for a temporary on-sale, on-sale license for SMSU Gold Rush Days, consider calling for a public hearing regarding the proposed property tax abatement for Daisy and Tulip Holdings LLC, consider the approval of agreements with Cigna and Hartford for voluntary employee supplemental benefits, and then finally consider the approval of the bills and the project payments as they have been submitted. Is there any item on the consent agenda any member of the council wants removed for purposes of separate discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to remove number 10, just for a typo thing. And then number six, Dennis, is there a conflict of interest with me being a retired firefighter? Because I should abstain from that?
I believe not.
You're no conflict? Okay. Then just number 10, please.
Okay. Any other item requested to be removed? If not, I entertain a motion on the remaining items.
No move.
Second.
By Steve, seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion passes. Agenda Item Number 10, calling for a public hearing regarding the proposed property tax abatement. Russ?
On our, on our memo, it says the $6,900 over four years, but on the breakout, the printout, it's got a total 10-year. And that very far column, I, hopefully that's just a typo because I believe it's a four-year agreement. On page 39 of the packet. Stephen?
Yes, it should be a four-year agreement.
Four-year.
Russ? And I think this came up at the EDA meeting, the same thing, four years but 10 years. I believe they, it's a 10-year maximum, but we're not using the 10 years. It would just be the four years as indicated.
So, so are we okay with the 10, being 10 years there in that form? It says total 10 years on that form.
It should not be 10 years on that form.
Should only be four.
It should just be the four.
Four, okay.
So that, that will be corrected.
Would that change? I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Russ. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Steve. Discussion? Not, we'll move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Look what we just voted on. Can you go back on that, Stephen? It says consider approval of agreements with Cigna and Hartford for voluntary employee supplemental benefits. Wasn't... There we go.
There we are.
Good catch. Time.
All the votes in. Now we'll close the voting. And, and the motion does pass. Thank you, Steve. Good catch. Agenda Item Number 13, consider a quote for the upgrade of the camera system and the recording server at Tall Grass Liquor. EJ Moberly, I believe you have this, Director of Administrative Services.
Yes, thank you. So with the new business here tonight, would you be, excuse me, our liquor store manager has proposed additional upgrades for the cameras and the recording system at Tall Grass. We currently have 12 cameras in place. This would be to add an additional six cameras would allow better image quality, more storage capacity, and increased coverage in and outside of the store. That's due to increased foot traffic and just it's time for some upgrades for some of the areas within the store as far as coverage as well. The proposal is, it was before you, we got it last week. It's only good for 20 days due to, as I noted there, that there's some fluctuating pricing, availability of product, and shipping cost issues. So that's why it is here. This is something that would be paid for out of the liquor store cash on hand to upgrade, or upgrade and add to this system. I was told by, by someone that was here longer than I have been that initially, when that was built, it was initially built with the idea of having 20 cameras within the store, and it was knocked down to 12 during the, during the process just to help contain costs. Now we're just trying to add some more cameras in and outside of the store to help have some more coverage for those areas.
Thank you, EJ. Questions? John?
Yeah. And maybe you partially answered this, but I suspect these are different cameras than what they had installed when they built the store? Or is this the same camera?
So these are actually, I believe they, they currently use the Vicon system now. So these are just, they've been upgraded with technology, but these would be adding to the system, not replacing anything that's there. It's just adding different locations as well. So this would all work together. The idea of the upgraded server part, which is that first line, the recorder server, the 32 terabyte thing, that, that would host all of the materials as opposed to their, they're going to run out of space on the existing system for that.
I tried to look up to see what the resolution of the camera was, and I wasn't able to identify that. And I, I was just wondering, yeah. I guess if something would happen, you want to be able to pull up a picture and zoom in on it and have some decent resolution.
Right.
So I'm just curious if we know what that is.
20 megapixel?
That's, that's pretty good. Probably decent enough.
And some of the cameras that will be on the outside have the 360 capability. We're going to put them in a corner so they'll actually cover 270 degrees.
Oh, sure.
To be able to shoot in multiple directions.
Saw that. I was just, yeah, I wasn't able to pull up the resolution. So it was 20 megabit. That's...
20 megapixel, yep.
Okay. Pretty decent.
Very good. Any other questions for EJ?
Approval.
Yeah, second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by John. Discussion?
Scott has done the majority of our cameras throughout the city, too, right? Living connected?
Yes.
Any other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting. And the motion passes. Agenda Item Number 14, consider appointments to various boards, commission bureaus, and authorities. So prior to our last regular council meeting, the council did interview two applicants for the EDA. We did not make appointments that evening. I did have follow-up contact with both of those applicants, and I am now recommending that Ben Bloome be appointed to a term on the EDA, and that term would expire May 31, 2023. Offer that as a recommendation and entertain a motion to affirm from the council.
I'd make that motion.
Motion by John. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Craig. Discussion on that motion?
So, Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
So just for the public to know, we had a lot of, we had two very good candidates for a board. This is a great problem to have, but it doesn't ever happen. You know what? It's, it's not happened in a long, long, long time where we've had two candidates, one spot for one board. Both candidates were amazing. We both, both had good things to do so, and would both be beneficial on the board. Unfortunately, we can only pick one. So whatever happens tonight, that's just the way it is. It's a vote.
Yeah. Thank you for adding that, Steve. Both are highly qualified. We're very fortunate that we have good people that want to serve the city on various boards and commissions.
We need more people to sign up and apply for those boards and commissions. It's what helps run the city. We can't do it all as council members. So if you're out there and you see us, apply for these boards and commissions. They're really good, and it's a good way to step into getting your opinions onto the city.
Other discussion on the motion? If not, we will move to a vote. And we'll close the voting. And the motion passes. We'll note one abstention. Because you weren't at the meeting. That's why you abstained. Because you weren't...
I went at, yeah.
At the meeting.
Also abstained.
Okay.
And for that reason.
Okay. But the motion still passes. Okay. Agenda Item Number 15, Commission Board Liaison Reports. Actually, from my standpoint, the Fire Relief Association has their quarterly meeting coming up the week after next and after this, and the Regional Development Commission will meet this Thursday. Craig?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mine have not met.
Steve?
So Cable Commission did not meet. Community Services Advisory Board, I believe, met, but I can't get to them because of work requirements. EDA met, and the big talk there is mall development at the former mall. Still a mall, I guess. Not very many people in there. There's a developer there. There is going to be some action. There's some plans going on. It's hopefully going to come to fruition in the near future, but that'll be a good thing for the city. So that's what 99% of the discussion was on.
Amanda?
We haven't met. It won't be till November.
John?
I was not able to attend the last EDA meetings, and Councilman Meister just reported on that. Marshall Municipal Utilities meets next week, but just a shout out to, you know, it was in the paper this morning. We had three members of MMU that were down assisting in the, the storm that was in Florida. Spent some time down there. They, you know, that's a representative of this community. So it's good to see this community taking an action. And it isn't just their help down there. You know, three people are gone out of the utilities here. Other people have to cover for them as well. So it's, it's a shared endeavor to go down and assist where things need to be done and where there's a lot of damage. So just thanks to that crew for doing that. The DEI Committee did meet, and part of the review was a discussion of our Welcome Week that we had, which was considered to be very successful. Several comments from both the, one of the organizers through SWIFT that Southwest Initiative Fund that was here commented as one of the best that they've seen for attendance, as well as one of the individuals from, I believe more of a state position, that made the same comment. Should note that all the expenses that were incurred by the DEI Committee for Welcome Week were covered under a grant from SWIFT. So we found out that they basically, they paid for it all. So it was good. The Public Housing Commission did not meet because of the holidays, so the meeting next week.
Russ?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Library Board met last evening. We took into consideration the increase in room rental rates for the library going into effect January 23. They've had a few requests even pre-pandemic for hosting graduation parties and bridal showers and things like that. So while we just didn't agree to increase the rates, we did not act on having the party. We will probably act on that next month. Delivery van, they put it on the state bid. It did not reach the $5,000 bid that they were looking for. Somebody had offered $4,600, so they offered it to that person or individual, and they backed out. So they will try and repost it again on the state bid as well as on Facebook and even, they might even park it in the parking lot with a for sale sign and with directions on going to the state bid site to bid on the van. Unfortunately, with school starting and we're back to the same thing with some small group of kids being very disruptive at the library after school. We've taken the stance, or Michelle has taken the stance this year, that they're not going to get a second and third chance. They get caught, they're doing stuff, they're going to just be banned from the library for a certain length of time. They're not going to get a warning, whatever, because it's the same group of individuals. They are using vulgar language, very disrespectful to staff and patrons inside and outside the building. So, and, and it's not, Michelle said it's not a huge number. I think she said four to six, and they're, you know, where they can weed out a couple and then they try and get a couple back. So it's, it's four or six kids that are being the, the most disruptive. So they're not going to get a second chance this time. So we had a very good presentation, Aspen Discovery Presentation, on their, on their new system of finding the authors and books in the library, not only in Marshall, but libraries throughout Plum Creek. I mean, say, for example, if the presentation last night was if you're looking for a certain book and this author, and we didn't have it in Marshall, maybe Ivanhoe had it. And so they would get it from Ivanhoe or whatever the case would be. So it was very, very informative and a very short presentation, but they now have an app that you can put on your phone. You won't need your library card anymore. You can just, everything is on, will be on an app. So it'll be a learning curve, and they thanked the paper for doing the article they did because they've had a lot of interest since that came out, of people coming in. coming in to look at and finding out about, more about Aspen. So CVB will meet Thursday, and that's all. Thank you.
Okay. And Jim?
Mine have not met.
We'll move then to council member individual items. Craig?
I don't have anything, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Steve?
No, sir.
Amanda?
Nothing here.
Jim?
I don't have anything.
Russ?
Thank you, Jason, for following up on a couple of concerns about the Tall Grass. Appreciate that. I haven't been by the one that we've kind of sidestepped around to see if that's been done, but I know the one on Forest Street has. So thank you very much for following up on that. That's all I have.
John?
The only comment I'd make is Community Services had Mike Lynch out with Starwatch or Stargazer, whatever it was, had an opportunity to attend that. There was quite a few people there that would watch. It was very interesting, a good program, and you get to see some planets and a few things. And it was interesting that the, about the time he started talking was, one, we had a meteor go through, and then the other one was the entire string that was of the new, what is it, Starlink, Elon Musk satellites that are working their way up in orbit passed right over us, you know, at the same time. So you see this long string of satellites going over. So it was a very interesting time. So.
I think my dog started barking right about that time.
Thank you, John. The, the only thing I would mention is last week was the final event of the 150th celebration with the unveiling and the rollout of the book that was really the independent, did the, the bulk of the work. So I commend the independent and specifically the, the publisher, Gregor Reer, who not only put a lot of hard, hard work into this, but also emceed the event. And Steve, you mentioned the mall. It was interesting. As you go through this, you can, you see a lot of history. And in 1972, there was a front page article about not only the current mall that was under construction, they were securing tenants, but there was two other malls that were proposed that actually went through the planning commission at that same time. So, so, but anyway, the book is still available, and I assume it's still available. I'd encourage people to, to, to take a look at the book, so.
Pick it up at the, in, at the independent or?
Yes.
Yep. Perfect.
And I think it's sometime in the future, maybe the Historical Society may also have some, too. So with that, we'll move then to staff reports.
Sharon?
We did, as a staff with the mayor today, talk a little bit more about the census appeal. And we hope by the end of the month to have our documentation together, including a letter from the mayor and SMSU about the correct dorm count. And we'll follow their process. But whether you look at housing additions, which will be separate from the census appeal, because we're doing group quarter resolution process, which is the dormitories. The city of Marshall's population is growing. It's not declining. And so possibly we'll bring this information back to the council just to share that information. We had previously sent some information back to the state demographer, who does yearly estimates of Marshall population, and did result in a change upward for their estimate for 2022. So those are a discussion that we had today. And that's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Sharon. Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. Quick construction project updates. The First and Greeley Williams Project, we should have final lift of asphalt pavement being installed on Thursday. Lot of black dirt and seeding work occurring today and concrete work this week. So really wrapping up and should meet our deadline of August, or October 21st on that project. That shouldn't be an issue. Looks like we're on track. Hallibur Road, we would hope to open by the end of the week. We're still waiting on our contractor to finish a few outstanding items. We are past the project deadline. That was September 30th, and we've been trying to work with them to get that wrapped up. The parking lot behind City Hall, the Baldwin Parking Lot, we expect concrete next week, but that schedule's not firm yet either. The RRFB project, all the pedestrian crossings around the school, we're being told that our signage should be delivered yet this week. So I would expect in very short order, we can get those installed and start to work on educating the public, I guess, on how to use those. Next week, on the 20th, we'll take bids for the Channel Parkway project for next year. That's the concrete surfacing project. We've got a large grant and hoping for good numbers. So we'll likely be coming to council at the next meeting with some bids. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Jason. Dennis?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Friday of this week is a mediation session scheduled with the city of Marshall and Minnesota Attorney General's Office and Paul Sheehold's owner at Broadmoor Valley to try to resolve all outstanding issues. That'll be conducted at the AG's office in St. Paul, starting at 10 o'clock Friday morning. So we'll be, I'll be attending that on behalf of, on behalf of the city and keep you informed as to the results. Thank you.
Okay. We'll move then to the remaining items, which include the administrator brief and the building permits, as well as the listing of upcoming meetings. Is there anything else to come forward at this meeting?
Adjourn.
By Craig to adjourn, seconded by Jim. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. We'll close the voting? The motion passes. We are adjourned.